All right, good evening. This is a real meeting of the Fair Haven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this past year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Esbury Park Press on January sixth, twenty twenty four, and the Tuber Times on February first, twenty twenty four, as well as supplemented by published notice of July eleventh, twenty twenty four, to advise of the hybrid format. That notice was also posted on the Bolton Board in Borough Hall, as remain continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to each, to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to read the statement in the minutes of the meeting. Uh, she looked me through roll call.
Bush here. Mrs. Koch.
Yeah.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Plow.
Here.
Mr. Robb. Mr. Nicka.
Here.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Antonin. Mr. Bailey.
Here.
And Mr. Fletcher.
Join me, well, rise to join us since the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, without borders, with liberty, justice, and fraud. All right, thank you. Um, well, jumping right into the agenda here, um, we have no old business to discuss, uh, although I guess we could, we could probably do this pretty free form as we become, uh, if people have questions and follow ups from the last meeting. Um, new business, nothing on the agenda here. We don't, we didn't, we had an application or whatever that was, that was carried or.
That was, uh, ended up being a change of yours.
Oh, zoning instead of.
But I do, just as an FYI, can receive a revised application from the seafood, Santa Fe Seafood, uh, market, um, which went to reach today and so it has technically four hundred. We need that, so we should be seeing.
Expect that, yeah, great. Um, moving to the administrative owners, did everyone have a chance to look at the November nineteenth, uh, minutes? Any comments? I had one, I think on page one, um, near, near the timeline for the affordable housing numbers, just to clarify that first bullet point. Round four started formally in July of twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five? Twenty four, correct? Yeah, it's, it's, it says twenty five on it, so. Other than that, I had, uh, I had nothing as far as corrections go. Anybody else?
I actually have one. So I took facilities as the, um, work on for the work stream. I want some money.
Okay, I'll make that version.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, other than those corrections, uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion. Again.
Um, Bush?
Yes.
Miss Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Plow?
Yes.
I think that's it.
All right, um, well, I think the meet of tonight is effectively follow ups. Um, as we began our discussion offered by, and kind of got a little bit into the details of, um, uh, of the master plan reexamination, um, it, it, it is a shame, I think that we had some, well, Kelly, yes, you went out, you have facilities, but circulation was Neil, um, land use was Andrew, um, uh, the conservation recreation open space elements were Bordelawn, um, and then the housing element, I think is still the full plan word by committee, um, but also in conjunction with the councils, how heavy you put it to, to the portable housing and the updates on that, but, um, you know, I was trying to think like maybe what, what we could do today is maybe Kelly, you and I, since we're here, we could talk about our, um, our kind of elements that we took away. And, um, you know, what, what research have you done? What have you found to impact master plans and, you know, where what do you think is worth discussing, you know, whether it's the survey, uh, or is it in specific things that seem to have come up since then?
I mean, I thought mine was fairly simple, um, because going back to the master plan, it outlined that the, you know, police department needed to be renovated, uh, public works, you know, community facilities, and we've done all of that, so, you know, back, looking back to the master plan, I mean, we, we addressed what was in there, um, as it pertains to that. I thought one of the takeaways was just coming up with a couple of questions for a potential survey moving forward, so I did that. I mean, it's pretty basic, um, I didn't know how deep we were, we were going.
I think all ideas are good ideas at this point, right? I think we're, we're, you know, we're kind of, we're, we're ahead of the survey, but we, you know, we gotta start maybe putting some of these things on paper, right? And so as they get recorded in minutes, that's, you know, might be the start of
Yeah.
some of the survey questions, so.
Um, yeah, so as that pertains to the survey, I just, you know, question, how satisfied are you with the outcome of the facility? My projects, then listing them all, and you know, it's basically by percentage. Um, you feel like you were a part of the process? Did you attend in an open house to review the, to review the project and plans? And that was basically it, more about kind of how we did it, so, I mean, I feel like we addressed, I mean, it's a major part of the, you know?
Yeah, yeah, if I recall, as, as we looked from the front of the page in the, in the reexam, because it was like, I, I was checking things off.
So not page sixteen.
Well, and also in the surveys, um.
Like every single.
Yeah, it was like, like whether it's in the progress.
And honestly, I just, so.
Is it down, down, down?
Yeah.
It is, but I, I ha- I left it just kind of open ended because I know they renovated it and stuff, isn't there always like a lot of question around Fisk Chapel and what is it?
Yeah, I guess you're right, like it's.
Like, I don't.
What's the main purpose of it?
Yeah, like.
It does get used for.
Meetings and.
It does get, yeah, it's good, thank you.
Oh, Fisher Apple, we have a project starting next week.
Perfect.
The ADA improvements, we're doing a new ramp, new ADA, but then we just got some, um, a matrix back from the architect for the remaining work that needs to be done, so we can get everything, and we, we believe we secured a grant from the historic trust for the painting of the exterior.
Perfect.
That's great, so it's, it's been ongoing.
All right.
But this is like the final phase, wrap it up.
Awesome.
Excellent.
So that was, yeah, that was my answer, and the other outstanding thing I just didn't know enough about, or if it fell in here, was lighting, like in all of the, like, Ferryman Fields and the community center, and, you know, that was a big question in the survey too, yeah, and in the master plan. Um, the only thing I would say, looking at the, the last couple of surveys, right, I guess the two, um, I mean, people do say they're pretty much satisfied with what we had offered, um, so I feel like moving into this, I mean, it, it should just be a win-win, given that it's listed that we needed to do this, and you put the questions out in a survey, I, I don't know.
Do we, do we know from, from the council or Rich, are there any things proposed by Mayor and Council for facilities?
Well, yeah, we have DPW, the police department, the community center.
Those are ongoing, but those are rejected, in a sense, it's ongoing. Anything new other than, because I think we addressed that.
We're, like I said, we're going to be finalizing the bicentennial hall project.
Which, what's that one there? What's the latest there?
So we did a, we got a grant through, we're going to develop a block grant to do ADA improvements, we're going to be doing the ramp.
So that's bicentennial, I thought.
Bicentennial Hall on Cedar. They also refer to it as Fisk.
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, same place?
Okay.
No, that's why, okay, fine.
There are improvements still that we're going to be doing at the AME Church on Fisk Street, which is like a private public partnership, we talked about that.
No, just catch, we just jumped in the facility, the facilities element, like, we're just starting with Kelly.
It wasn't, wasn't there, and again, freshman rec, it's like different boards, but wasn't there when we, and I thought it was here, when we looked at the school, we, we, when we did there, because they came back for us for the capital improvement, we took a look. Wasn't there a discussion with regard to doing something with parking or entering into something or increasing something for parking, primarily for people when they drop off or pick up?
Yeah, we did a project on Willow Street, we probably added fifty percent more spaces.
Okay, so we should probably put that in, that, that's, it wasn't, it wasn't.
I didn't see it, part of what I'm.
Yeah, and this, this section below, it's under circulation.
Were you remembering Lower Hill?
Yeah, the other work we did is, was on Third Street, we did a, through, um, a DOT grant, we basically linked this to two schools from pedestrian and bike kind of design, where we added, now we have a full pedestrian route between Nolan and Simples. ADA accessible, mainly funded through grants.
Uh, which is troubleshoot, does.
Buildings and facilities, I mean, this is really the, one of the last product buildings that needs to be done at some point.
Right, is it the, the roof right now is, uh?
We have, I'm going to be putting the roof out to bid in the first quarter of twenty five for this building. That's, that's just a.
But certainly that should be something that you mentioned to track for the next ten years, because next time we're going to do that.
Yeah.
What about Fairhaven Road?
Although that's where you start getting into capital improvement.
Yeah.
And even the sidewalks where you're.
Yeah.
You're talking about.
Circulation.
Yeah, that's not facilities, yeah, that's not.
The other facility is, um, concession stand at Fairhaven Fields. That building's over twenty years old now, it's going to need a new roof, it's going to need new HVAC. The bathrooms are getting decent wear and tear as the, uh, activities have increased just through even the increase in pickleball, tennis, all the other sports related activities, camps. So that, that type of structure at some point is going to need, I think it might be worth mentioning.
Any, anything, does the borough maintain any type of a marina or?
The only, um, I mean, we've got, we've got some waterfront assets, you know, the dock, a billion at the dock, uh, some bulkheadings. The, um, we're still on the planning phases of the acquisition for twenty one Ferryman Road. We had the, did Normandy Park come online recently, that probably needs to be added, but that, that would fall more under the, uh, declarations, you know, open space. But facility wise, I always think of, you know, bricks and mortar buildings.
What about the, um, fire station, like any Port of Apple complex?
That is owned by the fire department, and then there's, um, there's an agreement with the borough. Based on, you know, who maintains it, who pays electric, who cuts the grass, who takes care of where the the fire apparatus is stored.
So they're responsible for their maintenance and upkeep and?
No, the borough, there's an agreement between the fire department and the borough. Been ongoing for how many years?
Sort of a service and it's a mutual back and forth, I was there. Yeah.
So is that all responsible?
For maintenance?
Excuse me? The borough that is responsible for the building maintenance?
Yes.
Not all the building maintenance. They're only responsible for areas where fire appar- apparatus or first aid type equipment is stored. So if it's a garage bay where the fire truck is and the heat doesn't work, or actually the heating system might be, there's a, there's a separate agreement that's on file.
Okay.
That spells out all the parameters. In fact, I just looked at it the other day for, for something.
Or like, is there a law, like, like the DPW and the fire and the police station?
But like the outback building, borough doesn't maintain, the bathrooms in the back that they put on the back of the first aid building, we do, so there's, there's things like that.
So, do we have a long range plan or investment for that part that we are responsible for?
It's a, it's a, an agreement that's been in place, that's been longstanding, and both parties.
No, I understand the agreement is like they do this, we do this, so if we are the borough and we're responsible for the roof, for example, like, is the roof due in twenty years, is it due in ten years, is it due? That sort of thing, but do we have that, is there?
They just did the roof not too long ago, and they just did a pretty major improvement up on the second floor, I believe. The building itself is masonry and brick, so it's pretty stable, um. They did a bunch of site work years ago that it was kind of like a pay it down as you go, we used to make a payment annually to pay off, it was, they called it the concrete apron, so all the concrete in the front and the side, and they did all the parking lot silver and everything. So that's all been done within the last twenty years.
Rich, what about the brush?
Yeah, that was the one I was saying.
I was on that committee for one point, then that committee stopped, and then a new committee started.
So the brush, the, you mean the brush staging area where we bring the brush?
Brush facility, I mean, I don't know, it was in the, it was in the.
Yeah.
It's less than brush facility, yeah.
Yeah. So there's, um, there's an area that's carved out off of Willamette at the end of Hendrickson, where the borough brings its brush. It's, we call it the brush staging area, the brush is brought there on a regular basis, staged every six months, actually, a couple of weeks ago, we put a tub grinder in, we outsource it, they grind it, and then they haul away the shred from the mulch or the products. We have an agreement through Green Acres, we're allowed to continue to do that use. Um, there is a permit associated with it, we do get inspected pretty much monthly by the county to come out, and they, it's all good housekeeping type stuff that they look at.
Okay.
And we make sure our books are in check and.
So in general, that's kind of the way it's been, right?
Just, it's been the way it, it.
I just know it was all committing to people, my windows are rattling, I'm like, I just didn't know where they're at, so we're still grinding, we're still doing whatever we're doing there.
We're still grinding, the, the last grind they were done in and out in three days.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything about it this year.
No. Yeah, we usually, we do an email blast, we let everybody know, we, we work with the lease on it to make sure the equipment can get in there, everybody's safe. Make it very clear hours of operation.
So it did say in the master plan that it should be considered for relocation, but I guess we're not considering it.
We have looked at other options, but the challenge is most of our open space is on our recreation, open sport space inventory is not permitted use, not allowed. And historically, it's been there, it's preexisting. And, um, you know, we, yes, we did look at it through the BLC, the motion leave committee, and everything came back to pretty much.
That's quite right, like, there's nothing else to do, yeah.
You know, the one big change we made was we had a shared service with a neighbor in town, and we got rid of them, you know, we, we.
You don't have the addition of all that stuff coming?
Addition of that product, so it's just our. And, and it's also, it's, it's because it's just our material, we don't even have to necessarily put out to bid, we get quotes, we handle it administratively, we get it done, and that's it, and we work with local vendors, and they know the drill.
Okay.
When we were putting it out to bid, we were getting companies from Pennsylvania, North Jersey, they don't necessarily know how we are, you know, how things need to run down this way in a small community, and you know, they would show up with hundred door trucks, and we're like, wait, guys, you're not even going to get under that overhead wire.
Right.
They would make that turn at Fairhaven Road, so.
So maybe it's fair to say we changed the process, not necessarily the location.
Is that a shared service?
More of a control, I think it's more of a controlled effort. And, uh.
Well, you reduced this go with.
Yes.
Changed how. Yeah. Less intense, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not needed anymore. I guess you could still put a survey question. Just, just, sorry, just come back to the fire station, so like this reexamination is good for another seven years, that's right, ten years? So there's no borough investment required over the next ten years for the fire station?
We could have that conversation, but not that I'm aware of, you know, the, we, we pretty much handled the general upkeep of the exterior, cutting the grass, trimming the edges. When there's a no heat, we send a guy over to fix the heat, um.
Well, like you said, the roof replacement they did themselves, right?
Replacement, you know, any of those type of improvements. Yeah, that's.
They do. My very, very fundamental understanding of you have a fire district, they offer to provide services for that, and then there's a mutual agreement as to who's maintaining facilities, they do their own fundraising, they're a separate, they're a separate corporate entity and are authorized to take care of in this fire district, they then elect officers and things like that, but they do enter into an agreement. And, you know, we should probably also dovetail similarly with first aids.
Yeah.
And, and also library, again, because some of those are shared partnerships, and so maybe address those for facilities as well. Are we, are we, maybe for the library, are we part of the Mahanta County Facility, uh?
You're part of, as far as I know, we're, we're part of the management system, they do have they, they have their own internet, if they want to do certain improvements, I think they have to get approvals, um.
Would, uh, Rich will be?
Know all the specifics to that.
Would the library kind of get, uh, you know, put in together with the Borough Hall since they're together, unless somebody's going to separate them and build a new library, right?
Yeah, the library goes hand in hand with Borough Hall because they're under the same roof, right?
Hmm.
And the employees that work at the library are borough employees.
Oh, okay, shared utilities.
And we now have a shared service with Little Silver for librarians, so there's been some creative ways for cost savings. Because the librarian should be tired. And we decided to, and the governing body decided to, um, do a shared service with the neighboring town, cost savings.
Sure, utility, like utilities, all that is all commingled, there's no like separate meters for the library?
There's no separate meters, I mean, there's no separate electric, no separate water, it's, it's all in this building.
Yep.
There's no lease arrangements, it's the Fairhaven Public Library, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like we treat it as one of the same, yeah. Yeah. Facility. One facility, yeah.
Where they share, I think, is the, the inventory that they have, the books and, uh,
and activities.
And the computers and the activities, that's where everything is shared from a countywide system.
Right, here, your cam roof's just a roof, right? This place is just a roof, and I give you just cam roofs for your buildings, right? This is just one roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any more input on facilities? I was going to say, I was going to go through each element, is it okay if I check with the public?
Sure.
Go through each element?
Sure, let them all come up.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody here from the public who has any questions or comments about, please, uh, please join us at the.
If you'd like to sit closer too.
Well, I have some concerns, we ever had to get another piece of fire equipment, and it doesn't fit in the building, it was built in nineteen fifty-two, would the town have to add on a wing, or would the fire department add on a wing? That apparently we're wrong, responsible for the waves.
I don't know if that's a question we can answer, I think.
You might just have to take a look at that agreement.
Yeah.
With that situation, so.
Good question.
If, if and when they look at new apparatus, they have a full committee that handles that, and they look at, they look at the housing of the truck, the maintenance of the truck, what's required.
They're in need of a larger, um, a, a ladder truck that would not fit into the current phase, and that's why I'm bringing this up, because it's something that needs to be thought.
It's not to go higher.
Well, perhaps through this process, we can interact with the fire department to see what some of their wants and needs are for the master plan standard.
There's no reason why we can't reach out to them and ask what their potential change in facilities are going to be.
Yeah.
Who would handle that takeaway? Reach out to the fire department?
Your chair would designate someone for parent matter, by their attorney, judge, and that. Um, or maybe we could just have an informal telephone call.
Okay, I'd rather do the informal telephone call.
Yeah, email.
Could you email someone, Richard, would you mind taking that away?
Yeah.
Thank you. We're going to get there anyway. Um, so Brian, anything else?
No.
No, it was good, I'm waiting, I'm ready for the next one, it's going to be, uh, my, my element as well.
Um, yeah, how the rec fields, I guess that would be open spaces, I have different. Open space recreations. Open space recreation.
Yeah.
Keep that question, yeah.
So as far as, so I have utilities element, um, and I think I might be the only one here that had volunteered for one specific thing, but, so I'll just go through what I, uh, my observations were. Um, so, looking back to nineteen ninety-one master plan, seems like, you know, the utilities, uh, the, the goal, and this, this came up across reexams over the course of the years, to monitor and ensure adequate and, and efficient, um, utilities and services, and this mainly pertains to water, sewage, natural gas, electric, um, some things like brush and leaf, uh, service did come up, um, garbage, uh, was, was mentioned, uh, as well. Um, and then on occasion you get the mentions of like paving curves and, and sidewalks, I don't see that as a utility as much, it was more if there's a dig to service utilities underground, are the, um, you know, are the, uh, the paving curves and sidewalks brought back to serviceable, you know, anytime and matter, so. Um, more recently, uh, stormwater and previous coverage came up a lot, um, and as it relates to, to drainage and water around here, um. Uh, there, there is some interesting, um, commentary about fairing specifically in a report by Rutgers that Sheila sent around. Um, and it seems like almost every, and I read a few of them, like I read Red Banks, I read, you know, ours, and, uh, I can't remember which their own, but they all seem to kind of, this Rutgers report seems to recommend the same thing, everybody is like, you know, to reduce water in the sewers by ten percent, they suggest bio retention systems and more porous pavement, uh, system, so it's, it's the effort is, the, the effort is like to try to keep stormwater out of the rivers and seep through the ground, I guess, yeah. Yeah, and so it just seems like they have the same concepts, um, for, for solutions, um. So.
I think it's, it's, so it's interesting that at the, at the bigger level in New Jersey, it's stormwater is becoming talked about like a utility, like metering it.
Yeah.
And so in the next ten years, that will continue to be a conversation, so I don't know if that's something we want to.
But it's.
Mention or preemptive.
I, I think in all the recent, you know, documents, stormwater is mentioned, so I think we should, we should address it, and, you know, we should have, whether it is trying to reduce it through, you know, bio retention and, you know, porous paving, or should we try to store it and use it for, you know, for some, you know, reuse kind of concept, I saw there's some like these, you know, um, aggregation tanks that will take, you know, rainwater and store it, and then they'll use it to like, uh, some other function in the spring when you can water the, the, the town garden or something like that.
Well, one of the things we've done is clean out a lot of those catch paces, right? Does that help?
Well, that helps from the maintenance of our existing infrastructure, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it helps the down, the downstream flow into.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
And, and you also diverted something, right? You, you diverted the flow over by Colonial Terrace? No?
That, no, that was a, um, as part of the subdivision. Well, they have, they have, they have an extensive recharge system under that cul-de-sac, but the, the overflow, there's a check valve which controls.
Right, and there was a problem with that.
The outlet, yeah, it'll flow through, yeah. That was just through like a corrective action measure.
And I, I thought they did something on Smith Street, I guess not.
Yeah.
Yes?
I believe they put in pipes that were larger for better connection. It was a large pipe that went to a smaller pipe and it backed up the wall.
We upsized the crossing at the intersection of Smith and Foreman, but that was, that was an infrastructure upgrade, yeah.
So that doesn't really affect stormwater?
It allows stormwater to flow freely where, where what you felt was getting bottled up. But one thing we did do is the, um, when, when the Acme site came before us, they took all their roof front off from that building that backs up along Smith, and that goes into a thousand gallon recharge on their property. So that kind of goes into that, if you could take ten percent or whatever.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Um, you know, maybe something, and I'm sure this probably comes up, zoning, um, as applications are processed, I mean, and we come up here, you know, for commercial sites, right, that we say we always want to have a, a, an ask, um, for, for rainwater from the earth, since it's a recharge pit, so.
The other main, the other big change we made was we, we made up the street opening ordinance, where now when a utility or, or property owner opens the street or opens the right of way, they need to do full restoration. That's why this summer you saw all the streets being paved by the gas company, uh, paving subcontractors and water company subcontractors, because we had that, we had those ordinances in place where before they would, they would either pave the trench, or they were infrared, or they would patch it in, or do half the. Where before they would, they would either pave the trench, or they were infrared, or they would patch it in or do half the road. Now it's full pavement with curb to curb, edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So that, that may be worth mentioning.
I I underline that, that's actually in the ninety-one master plans, that in the event future development exceeds the service capabilities of water sewer facilities, the plan anticipates that developer will upgrade the necessary utility service in such a way that the additional houses are constructed. I think it also implies that like it goes cosmetically goes back to the way that it was, like, with with no, no detriment to the town, right, so.
The only other thing I would mention is, part of the town, part of the borough is still on Red Bank water. It's not New Jersey. We had a meeting, our administrator had a meeting with the town manager, Red Bank, probably a couple of months ago, just to start a discussion. See if, you know, like the portion of Harrison and Lake and some of those college streets are still on Red Bank water. And, we get complaints or residents fall in with issues. I don't know if you are.
Like we're on New Jersey.
I know the master plan mentions the American border specifically, but I don't think it mentions, portion of the borough is on Red Bank water.
I guess that is utilities. Um, is it, would we want that to be a goal? Of the borough to bring everyone on Jersey.
Think, I think ultimately it is a goal. I I I can't speak on behalf of the mayor and council, but I think that was, part of the objective of having that meeting because, the um, the infrastructure isn't, isn't what it is for the New Jersey American border side of it. Like when we did Lake Avenue, the second I opened the road up, like things started, to fail. We had to shut the road job down and get Red Bank to come in and do an emergency watering uh, replacement. So their infrastructure is much older. They don't have the resources to keep up with, the improvements like New Jersey American does. That's really what it is.
I see, okay. So it'd be a better water experience for our residents.
Oh, and the other thing too is all the um, a lot of you may have gotten notifications where they're doing the meter, they're they're doing the service replacements.
Yeah.
For the lead pipe. And that's, that's part of, that whole thing too is that, there's a ten year plan and I think they're already on like year six, so they're heading.
Sheila, you're on Red Bank water?
Okay, I'm jumping.
Do you feel that, do you feel?
You're on Red Bank water?
Is there any experience that you can share that you wish you had fair even water?
How's it taste?
Right, they've got a lot of sampling of the last couple of years, blood sampling.
Yeah.
And they are doing that um, replacing the pipes. Stages.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't know, I really couldn't. Say.
Yeah. I'm just curious from from a utility standpoint, then, if that is part of this element, wh- what is the benefit? Is it, is it that our, the infrastructure will be, updated in a more timely sense, but it sounds like the Red Bank experience is similar. I'm just curious what the game is. Oh, the pressure.
Is, I was, I was gonna ask, is that only infrastructure is like the source of your water different than American water?
The Red Bank actually supplements their source with New Jersey American. So it's not just their plant.
But they do have a separate source.
They have a separate source, but they don't have enough, so they have to tap into New Jersey American to provide the water supply that's needed.
This was in your summer. Like most of it comes from, over on uh, and then when it doesn't come from swimming rivers, I think it's um, supplemented through the Manas water reservoir. That's that's somewhere in, you know, but it didn't mention, companies who mentioned reservoirs and.
Yeah.
Facilities, not that much.
So it's just interesting that, you know, from a town perspective, with this being like, more homogeneous, if the source does matter, right, that's just an interesting element. It's not just the infrastructure and pipes and how they're updated. But, right, if we're all, it looks in town is on the one reservoir and it's healthy and happy and half that town is on a different reservoir and it's not healthy and happy.
Kind of should be a goal for almost be healthy and happy.
Might make it, might make it easier. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know that it has to be our goal. I'm just pointing it out that it's, different.
Didn't we just approve a new stormwater, production plan or something like that recently? New regulations that were coming in to address, old standards and going from simply the, is the hundred year storm to, other other events and then also, what was happening to things that, what's dead when people were developing? Do they go to the old standard? Do they go to the new standard? What happened to the things in the pipeline? So we did have, that that was recent, but there are, I think over the past, at least the past five years, we have probably annually received, some different stormwater regulation on New Jersey D P. And it's not a, I don't wanna say heavy handed, it's please adopt this to make sure that your ordinances are consistently.
Well, we both work on it, yeah. These fifteen we on most of it.
Yeah, so it could be another resource. I mean, we did simple things like just making sure all new construction had dry wells, right?
Which I'm saying ties into this whole utilities thing, uh, a goal of reducing stormwater, the energy reduction, but awareness is worth, keeping up with what they're putting into play is doing that. Like you said, on cutters to dry wells instead of getting dumped in sewers and all that stuff. So I should, it should be mentioned.
Basements have to be two feet above the seasonal high water mark. People were building their basements into the water table. And that water was being pumped into the streets. So we got, we fix that.
We're seeing some things that will go back to utilities. It also cross over, we're talking stormwater, cross over to the land use element. The memo I've sent out early on, you have the land use plan, statement for strategy, smart growth, storm resiliency, and environmental sustainability. There, that particular statute requires you have, within your land use element, I think you could, and we're gonna address some other things that you haven't. Cause I think it goes, crosses over to utilities. That the land use development element will have, staples concerning smart growth, which will consider potential locations for installation of electrical vehi- uh, vehicles, charging stations, storm resiliency, with respect to energy supply, flood prone areas and environmental infrastructure and environmental sustainability. So here's where you have something crossing over between the land use, you're going back to your utilities, for why you make ready for that. And again, your your reorganization would be, I think, to suggest that we begin to start planning for those things. I don't think you have to solve that problem with reexamination, but I think we have to recognize that this is a responsibility, and it changed in legislation since twenty eighteen. There's a couple of others in life now, but I, I think the electrical one comes to going back to utilities, where at least you should put or devote some paragraphs to those things that over time need to address.
Uh, yeah, thank you for bringing that, cause that was, that was, I'm sideway into that.
I'm sorry.
That was perfect, actually. Said it perfectly. So, so yeah, so the 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 electrical supply and make ready parking spaces, I, as I read, as I read their note, that does seem like a utilities, you know, adjacent type of subject. And I was thinking for the survey, you know, I think, I think there's, I think there's some some metrics and goals somewhere where it's like, you know, X percentage of parking spaces need to be, you know, done to make ready sense where they can, you know, anticipate putting a new B charging station there at some point in the future, but it's it's wired underneath the ground. I feel like this came up with the police station, maybe. And and so it seems like we're, we are implementing that, but I think maybe at least for the survey, you know, to to let towns folks, uh, let the residents know that, in some way that we are thinking about that and that, you know, you know, maybe a question could be like, you know, are you, are you aware that there's now a a mandate for E V, you know, power uh, for all new parking lots and things like that? I don't know, some, we had come up with some.
What's their preference? Like, it's Borough Hall has a parking lot. The fire station has a parking lot.
Yeah.
The businesses on here have very small parking lots. So if we asked our neighbors, where would they prefer to have parking spots that are chargeable? And that would be good information for us to know.
That's great, yeah.
Well, last was left off, though. There's, there's, there's no rules, right? There, there's nothing that says we have to put in one electrical, one E V spot for every ten spots, right?
It's, it's, it's done as, it's done as a carrot provision.
Right.
To decrease your parking requirement. And if you have, one, a charging station, you get a credit.
Right.
So that if you had to put in ten, but you have an E V station, maybe you get, maybe you get away with putting in eight, so to speak.
Right.
Okay.
So that would be the Borough level.
No, but I I think in terms of what we do as a planning board, you know, down the line, you may want to have in our checklist of items, you know, are you putting it, you know, when we. Are we putting in, are you putting in electrical facilities? Are you putting in those kinds of things?
It's not. No, for, okay, so for zoning, it's not anywhere. Not even for commercial? Borough property is one thing, but.
We have to review that statute.
Yeah, making private people do it's a completely different story.
And that's, and that's where your head will come in and help you with some of those things. Again, this is not to, solve it in your reexamination work, but since twenty sixteen.
No, we have to identify the challenges, right? So if it is, let's, let's hypothetically, let's say, I have a small commercial building. If if I wanna redo it and I come before zoning, and there's a rule that says I now have to offer.
Uh, only if you came before the. Uh, it wouldn't be an administrative function. If you came in for a site plan review, that's where,
Yeah.
That's where we're coming.
Right.
Not if you went to the zoning officer. You said that I came in for zoning.
Right, well, that's, that's, that starts the process, doesn't it? If I wanna rebuild that lot, they rebuild that property exactly. And so it's, it would start with zoning. They would be the first.
You don't have to. You could, you could automatically submit to a board, submit an application to the board secretary. You don't have to get, you don't have to get denied at the zoning officer.
Which is, which is why it might be easier to have it in your checkoff list of site plan. Give us your smart growth, your smart growth compliance.
Right.
Give us your, and and they may not. We may decide how we want to.
Although the feedback I'm getting, even this afternoon, that our zoning permit application is too complicated. Because there's a lot of questions on there, like, you know, pick one, uh, do you?
That's a different conversation.
You know, a different conversation, but to add that extra layer on there, I guess.
Well, but but that's good to know too.
Yeah.
We do wanna be user friendly.
Yes. So.
But I mean, something, sometimes the simplest, are you taking down trees? You gotta ask it some.
You have to ask it, yeah, of course.
I mean, that does add, and you don't see that in all of the checklists throughout every, every news about.
It's part of the due diligence process. You have to, walk them through that and let them know you're gonna need to do this, this, this. If you do this, you might have to do that. Yeah.
Uh, but I think that at least the electric, I think you probably talk more of a commercial property than.
Yeah.
Well, I think we struggle with the mandate at a residential level. I think you struggle with the mandate at a commercial level. Look, look, look at all these dealerships who went, fell so crazy with E Vs and now they're sitting around everywhere, because nobody wants to. So, you know, I would be tough, trying to make me take my parking lot or whatever I do and put in a bunch of E V things or two for every ten.
And and that may, that may, that may be with the survey information.
And just coming back to the stormwater, um, wearing my other hat of environmental commission, it would be really helpful to know in the survey responses, how would people be interested in or willing to do things at their individual level to capture stormwater?
Yeah, it's a great question. Would you as a resident be willing to?
We voluntarily?
Yeah, voluntary, do you do one of those bio retention, you know?
I'm trying to be too specific. I'm just, you know, at that level, um, like some people will already do it, like my home does that already, but there are some that don't. And so it would be work that they would.
I I will tell you, we are routinely seeing before the zoning board of adjustment, if you're seeking variance relief and you have increased, any types of impervious coverage, um, even if, even if that isn't what's driving you to variance relief, but when you're seeking that, there is almost routinely an exploration whether or not you would place in, a dry well to capture rainwater off of the gutter. And and routinely we're seeing people, because they, I think they see the benefit of it. They don't want, they don't want increased drainage problems on their own property either, and they seem very willing to do that. So there's something like that. And or, and and again, it's, it's not necessarily required where you're increasing that, that either the impervious or the building coverage, and you're already tying in for variance, we're seeing the willingness to do that. It helps the board get over the bump of what you're doing that's, uh, getting you through your special, special reasons.
Have we thought about doing like primary wall pavement, stuff like that? Like, you know, making out a department to, again, continue with this reduction of runoff and rainwater. You know, in in certain areas or essentially in areas, definitely are oversized or whatever. I think that's part of the police station conversation too.
Or it's like a single family residential.
I I don't know, I just, I looked, I printed, um, Sheila had given us the Middletown's master plan, and these are some of their stormwater recommendations and ideas. And I I think that's kind of a decent one, you know? So I think it it, we break it into like the different zones later. We just saw fire station has a huge coverage. Huge, it concrete runs right off it, right to everywhere else. Acme has another large, and I think that's been broached. There's a, a Rucker study that talks about different parts of our borough where we can attack stormwater runoff and water collection. That's one of them. Um, but I think at the individual resident level, it's more about helping people make physical choices, right? When someone's gonna put in uh, a driveway, or someone's gonna redo their driveway, whatever, how, you know, like how do we, help them know what, what options there are.
Right. Perhaps your reexam is to ask, the borough to look at this to the design for if permeable paper is giving, we give you a credit for your impervious. Total impervious coverage, we're gonna give you credit if you do something, where is a, you know, permeable base, we'll give you fifty percent credit for that, so to speak, work that out. If you put in a rain, if you give a, a rain guard, if you do something like that, that we can then develop regulations where if you might otherwise need a variance for impervious coverage, if you do these things, maybe you can lessen that. And that can be something of a recommendation. We'd like to see if that's, if that's, and again, I think it's important to make sure people are willing to, want to do that, that you help yourself.
Yeah, ideas are coming back in the survey, trying to get a, a pulse on what, what people are open to, and what percentage are open to those things. And then I think that can really inform policy.
I guess one other dumb question utilities, what's the relative cost in the old ninety-one format of the town owning garbage trucks and running?
Okay.
The final, my final comment was gonna be literally said ninety-one D P W did the garbage as, as a ninety-one. What was the cost benefit of that model? And and given the recent changes to our uh, service, is it worth reexamining, doing it ourselves? Um, I know that would probably involve buying a truck, you know, sort of like a rear loader and all some, but.
Involve buying several trucks and hiring additional staff. That's, when I started here, in oh seven, that's when they were starting to have conversations about outsourcing it. We still had it in-house. We had three large trucks and a small truck. On recycling day, I took the entire apartment to pick up the borough. It was a little different then. That was when you put loose cardboard next to your can. But then you also had the large toders. Everything was still one arm bandits. We had continuous mechanical breakdowns. There's a lot of moving parts with those, with those units, not just, the truck, the cab and the engine, it's also, the attachment on the back with the arm mechanism and everything else. And at the time, they did a study and they determined that it was more cost effective. And they were, they were downsizing in staff. I mean, D P W used to have twenty. And they were, they were downsizing in staff, I mean, DPW used to have twenty something guys, we have seven right now. Uh, you know, so the practicality of trying to bring trash in house.
Plus, plus additional service.
We can't hire anybody.
And we've been interviewing and we can't, just like every other.
That's everywhere.
Industry.
Don't feel that.
Just. What we're dealing with right now.
Wow, okay.
So, and, and the other thing too is the supply chain issues, we, we order a dump truck, it takes two years.
Yeah.
If not more.
Have there been cooperative arrangements between different municipalities, say, on your?
So when they did the trash bid, this last go around, we looked at the neighboring towns to see when their contracts were up. To see if we can kind of reset the clock to try to piggyback and do a, a multi-borough. Like mid, and, um.
That's why you did.
The timing was such a. Yeah, we did a three year, but we didn't, we didn't lock ourselves in two or five, we went three year. Which, you know, we're halfway done with that already, that was as of what, May, June? So we're two and a half years left, before we know about it, we're gonna be talking again about putting it out to bear.
What was the total, I mean, dumb question, what was the total cost of that? You know, I mean, that's sort of an unfair question, but like.
If it had so many different options.
Is it, is there, I guess it's public record that we can dig that up. Yeah, the big pack, yeah, public record. And it would have everything from the tipping fees included to, you know, it's, it's not just picking up, it's then dumping it out to the service.
It, it was up like by ninety-five percent, ninety-six percent over the previous contract, and then we only had one. Response.
Sorry, what was the increase?
Ninety-seven percent, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, wow.
Just going back.
Over the exact same service, nothing added.
Well, I mean, the cost, I'm sure the cost of the tipping fees were up, I'm sure the cost of other administrative fees were up.
Fuel's up.
And, and the cost, the cost of.
Up, but we only had, we only had one offer. That's it, it's like someone decided we're going with fairing, and someone decided they're going with silver.
Just a, a final note on stormwater, I just wanted to pull up a document, back in August, Nick and I. Nick, which is being I had a, a Zoom call with. The Rutgers University Water Resources Program. They had. A service where they offer to municipalities to help us with some of our stormwater needs. Whether it's ordinance reviews. Uh, watershed implementation, planning, things of that nature. We contacted them, we were actually the first municipality to contact them. They submitted a proposal and we accepted their, their service. So that was as of a couple of months ago, so they're working with us. Go through all these requirements, things that we need to do. And basically free, so we're working with one of their PhDs. In the program, and it's the RCV Water Resources Program. And they're providing a level of service for us, so. We are doing a lot of partnerships kind of behind the scene, I know you saw all the documents that we did with Rutgers, and there was one Stevens. And, and some of the others that we've worked with in the past.
That, that certainly sounds like it's worthy of a paragraph if you agree to. Does this, does this include sort of your? Your water service, your sewer service?
No, this is strictly stormwater.
Strictly stormwater.
Yes.
Look, how is, how is the borough's services for water sewer, you know, sewer, but. Disposal and delivery of waters, I mean, your infrastructure for their pumping stations, those kinds of things.
Well, tho- those items.
Or are you, or are you doing it like most municipalities, when we have a large commercial infrastructure? We take a look at it and say, look, you're gonna make a contribution to something old.
Well, in our case, we have a regional sewer authority, two rivers, and we have a private entity, New Jersey American, and some of their bank water.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily managed and maintained by the borough or borough officials.
Okay.
So it might be worth having that ask whether are they looking to do any plant upgrades? Are there any new rules and regs that need to go into place where that might trigger some upgrades that they have to do in town? I mean, obviously, as we pave streets, we send out our drawings to all the utility companies to get their feedback, to see if they're looking to do any improvements prior to us. Through paving.
Yeah, so we're not.
But I think though, a town like Fairhaven that is. Pretty much built out, the, the infrastructure's in, in place, um, from a sewer standpoint is adequate. The water and gas companies have been doing tremendous amount of upgrades in the last fifteen years, I think the gas company is pretty much done, they've upgraded all their, their mains. And the water company is a lot as well, so.
What would you place the age of our sewer system on?
Depends what area town.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Tell us what you want.
You know, and, and to your point, you know, are they looking at doing any upgrades for any of the pump stations that are in the borough as well?
Uh, I will tell you, there was, there was a correspondence that I was a part of with, with. Uh.
I'll send an email.
Chairman, Chairman Fred, which was, you know, which was, you know, what, this is from our, you know, we were gonna touch base with. Um, Borough Administrator. And his question was, he doesn't look like the planning board is gonna be doing a full rewrite of the master planners, it could be a reexamination of the models. And in that, I also sent a note out to invite him to share with the planning board. If there were any proposed infrastructure changes, if they thought there might be any. Thoughts of changing any zoning or things that they might be considering. Um, because I think we should be aware of that, at least address that as a planning issue. Um, so I think there are things that are coming, coming our way. If, if that's happening. I mean, I don't, I have not heard, nor have I, with the plan, but of any redevelopment, those are sometimes things that happen. If it's in a planning stage and it's, and it's ripe for discussion. You would again, want to make sure that that was referenced in your reexamination, that would take care of things like land use, utilities. Facilities, if you're going to have something like that designated area. Okay.
Um, before I ask the public, is there anything else from the planning board regarding, uh, utilities discussion, utilities element?
Yeah, I'm kind of piggybacking off the Middletown one, looking at ideas. One of their things was moving, um, stuff out of flood zone areas, we don't have any stuff in the flood zone, right? Townless, like town equipment.
We don't have any borough. Facilities or.
Right, they're not ours, right, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
And then the, um, could we kind of take communities as well, or facilities as well, kind of like? Wh- what about police, um, vehicles, equipment, DPW vehicles? Or they all, or you need to buy twenty new trucks, or they all, uh, our fleet is good, or fleet's young, or?
In DPW, we basically work off a five-year plan where we, we do, uh. Kind of look ahead to see. Where these certain vehicles are gonna be, the condition they are in, um. Staffing needs and, and even. I guess it might be worth mentioning too, like, we've, we've kind of looked at, we've rebuilt DPW in such a way where the days of buying a truck. Do one thing is no more, where, where we don't just buy a truck to use it twice a year, we buy a truck to use it every day. We've, we've trimmed down on a lot of that, where it's multi-use type vehicles, which. Makes sense, is if the trucks aren't moving.
They're robbing.
They're not, they're not doing anything, so. You know, even from our snowplow operations, we do most of the plowing with pickup trucks now. Our streets are, are set up for that, where I came here, we had these large dump trucks, and all we, all I did was. Constantly pull people out all night long because we kept getting stuck, because they can't make the turns, and there's a foot of snow and. You know, or it, so those types of things, those different changes we made, um. I can't really speak on behalf of PD.
Do we, do we provide the, do you provide the PD, I'm assuming, for the vehicles, right?
We provide and rebuild, we build police cars in-house, which is quite rare for me as a pilot.
Okay.
Sorry, explain that.
Yeah, you build it?
So they buy, they'll buy, say, a Ford Explorer or a Chevy Tahoe. Police package type truck, which is. Your basic police interceptor type vehicle. We build everything from. Uh, putting in the sirens, putting in the, 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 um, the light, the light bars. We wire everything for the laptops, we do everything that's in those cars, we basically strip it out. We take the seats out, we take everything out. The headliner, everything's out, and pull and wire and build them.
Right.
And we've been doing it for years, soldering wires.
Doing that, right, Jeff Jarvis?
Well, it's, it's through DPW.
Yeah, he would assist the vehicle maintenance mechanic with all of that, and, um. She basically orders all the parts that he needs and has everything delivered over to DPW, and as things come in, we're.
And substantial.
Yes, it's, it is, um. It, it's a lot of time though and effort to get it done, because it's what we've had in the last few years, is you can't, sometimes you wait until parts. You can't get certain parts to take, where things used to be off the shelf, now it takes three months to get. Some bracket that you needed, so.
But it's, what, what predated this was some sort of analysis that said this was a better way than buying a finished car?
Must have been, it's a long time ago.
That's a long time ago.
Like, prior, because we were just talking about.
So when I came on board.
With the trash, right?
When I came on.
Said it was better to outsource trash, does this building cars predate that?
Oh, yeah, when I came on board, the vehicle maintenance, the mechanic started here in nineteen eighty-one. And he worked with me for a number of years, and he was building police cars, so this started, this could have started forty years ago. Fifty years ago. So, yeah.
Just a little factoid about. I get a new stereo, I'm just gonna buy a component. Exactly.
Has to be.
Um, anybody else on utilities, facilities up here? Anything from public?
Well, I haven't thought, because it has been mentioned about putting solar on our buildings, and I don't know whether that would fit under. Facilities or whether it would found here in utility, we're both.
Proso, yeah.
We did a, we had a, we had a consultant do an analysis for both. PD Community Center, also DPW. And the results came back that just from a cost-effective standpoint, it, it didn't make sense. The amount of. Usage at those facilities, the, 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 you know, how they spread it out over twenty-five years or whatever that number is. It did not, the cost justification wasn't there. You could still do it for, you know, if you wanted to do it from an environmental benefit, but the cost was so great. The increase in upgrading the roof structure to handle the solar panels, just it. We have all those reports, so I, I mean, that might be worth mentioning that that was done.
It was part of a larger en- en- in energy assessment, if I recall correctly.
Well, they did. Years ago, they did an overall energy audit and assessment for the buildings, but this was specific just to solar for the new buildings. For the DPW renovation and the new PD and Community Center.
Because the buildings happen to face the right way anyway, that most people don't realize.
There's a lot of parameters.
Like I have a five thousand square foot warehouse, you'd be like, oh, this is perfect, you know, you can go to both sides, people come to like. We can only put on this side, that side's not gonna catch the sun based on where the sun rises. So these big plans start dwindling down to, there's many solar panels, what do you get out of it for the cost, you know?
The roof has to be able to support the weight.
Right.
Plus, they only size, they only provide, there's, there's calculations you do, so you, you can't generate. More than you need necessarily, you have to, they're gonna look at your usage. And. I had it done for my house, it, it didn't make sense, you know, if the electric bill is X. It, it, you know, it, it just didn't, it didn't add up, and then, and we, we did the same thing here, and. The other thing too, the technology that's in these new buildings and the smart lighting and the sensors and the LED. That's out there now, and all, it's all Bluetooth, it is state of the art, like. We just had a big training session at DPW on the lighting system, it is unbelievable.
I s- I assume at some point, then, whatever you do here, you'd, you'd upgrade that as well, the lighting situation.
And you can still have an assessment done, they will come in and they will tell you, you know, if you change these out. Do these tomorrow, ener- energy efficient, and it's almost the cost savings over. And you meet your delta, it's work. And some familiarity with different school districts where they have a much larger ph- physical plant. And in a sense, what's done is the, the school does not own that, that solar panel array.
Right.
You know, you're having a company come in, they do the assessment, they get the credits for, for what they're doing. You get the benefit of the elec- of the reduced electric, and then over a period of time, you either buy the system or you have them take it down. Um, so the, the separate contractor, and you really do need a fairly large facility to make it work.
That's right, that's the thing that they always get shown, you don't own the equipment, right? Somebody else gets the credits, like the, the.
Well, there's different models, like, there's different models.
Yeah, there's like, that was the catch, one, the one time I looked at. Oh, they're, they're referred to assessments. And they get, they get so much money to do it, so it's an incentive for them. They get a contractor that they, that they in a sense do business with after they've. Acquired the, you know, you do, you have to do a whole assessment, it has to pay, it has to pay for yourself using it.
And then you have a broker for the S-Rex.
Yeah.
A negative percent, so there's, you know. We have all those reports, so. It, it, it could be worth mentioning that the analysis has been done.
Any other questions from public?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, the water company, I'm not sure has made any improvements that they need to. A number of years ago during high usage, obviously in the summer when everybody's filling their holes and watering their ones and everything. We had to, um, restrict our usage, and not because the reservoir was low. It was because the water company didn't have the pumping capacity to keep water pressure up. So I'm not sure whether they ever made the changes that they needed to, or when they have restrictions in place. Is it because they don't have the pumping capacity yet?
Well, they just did that massive water main project over the road.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with their pumping capacity over in, um, uh, by the reservoir.
Well, it has to do with the conveyance of the water, so.
Yeah, and you have to have the pumping capacity in order to keep the water pressure up and in order to get it to be there. I pinned them down in a calculating about this, and I wasn't sure whether they ever went ahead and did anything about it. So then my second point is, what can we do about the power company, because I'm just tired of resetting everything in my house.
Underground.
That's right, verbal.
Except when the pole gets hit and runs, then that's not gonna help. Everybody's not gonna go underground, yes, when you have new construction, you can put it underground very easily. But everybody here is not gonna do that.
Wasn't it, would it, that, wasn't it looked at and people didn't want it, which I can't believe, but.
Well, I think the call, if I recall from shade tree days, you know, the conversation is similar, like, everybody wants big, beautiful trees, but they don't want them to damage the wires during storms. Because everything's above ground, and the cost to bury everything, you know, not just, not the ones to your house, but the, the high wires out.
Yeah.
It's, you know, tens of millions of dollars as far as a little town.
But, but what happened after Sandy, when we had crews from out of state come in, they said help. They said how antiquated our equipment in town was. And this was at a general meeting that we had during the after effects of Sandy. That, and far as I know, we're still dealing with it.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that in the survey, if we included some questions about, uh, uh, are the residents happy with the consistency of here? I, I can, I can guess what the answer is.
But it's still not good.
That's true. But what do we, what can, like, what can we affect?
You can have a conversation, I guess, right? The borough can have a conversation. We don't want to.
Mr. B, that's right, haven't we tied this into a reexamination issue or question?
Right, do we wanna make it a land use or a planning thing where every future house is built? The utility has to put something underground. When more than a certain number of houses on a certain, on a street.
It is a requirement, you have to have undergrounds.
But from the pole to your house.
Right.
That's different from pole to pole. So if we were gonna read, like, gentry was done years ago, right? If you're, is that all underground there? Right?
Yeah, it is.
Right, so if we're gonna, like, that's how we would affect change, if we're gonna stay, you know, so many houses in a particular neighborhood or a street or whatever, change.
I don't think we're gonna land though.
Because we've done where land is gonna be developed, right? So then how are you gonna get the existing?
I think if anything. Take a look at your generator, is it, is it? Easily attainable for a resident to, to have a generator installed, or is it? Too much red tape and they're coming to the zoning board, I don't, that's more of a land use type thing where. I think if you look at the amount of generators that have gone in in the last since Sandy, numbers are staggering.
I would imagine it's not that hard to handle, maybe, in the port that are out there.
It's not, but, you know, it's, you can't put them in the side yard, you don't put them in a front yard, you know.
Yeah, it's thirty ways, certainly just away from windows.
There's so many.
Yeah.
Feet away from your house, can't be there's anything combustible, it's.
Right. The towns.
And then, and, and they're everywhere. Yeah, I know, but then there's an expense thing too, also, you, you wanna put as close you can to your gas, you wanna put as close to getting your incoming electric, so you don't have to run gas electric across the whole house, yeah. Yeah.
Those are right, it's a great topic, um, but I don't know that we're gonna come up with the, with the, the solution for everyone, you know?
But it, it is something to keep in mind.
Well, th- this is the right, the master plan is the right place to mention, um, we should aspire to better, right? So. Um, any further? Uh, sorry. Any further questions from? Public on any of the utilities or facilities who were. Both discussed tonight, um, before I let her we go, I wanna, I have a couple of follows, mainly for, for Rich and Betsy. Any else, any else on the, uh, on the exam, reexam?
I, I, I just have one. Question, I, I was talking to Chris York today and he's, he doesn't know, are we definitely going with the reexamination? Has that been decided?
I thought that had been decided, uh, we're not rewriting the whole master plan, right? I don't think that, that we've committed to that, I think the reexam.
He hasn't gotten formal notice of it yet.
I think just reexam.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that was the question, this broached with the chair. I think the chair's response, I don't think that I want to speak for the chair, was that we were leaning towards reexamination as opposed to. Um, an entire rewrite of the master plan and the, and the inquiry that was made. By, by the town was, you know, because there's a different cost element and if we're constructing our budget, we'd like to know.
Right, they're doing the twenty-five budget.
Maybe we should make sure that we get back to our administrator, if that, if, if so, say you all that were on reexamination to formally do that so that they can. Plan for that and that would also. Be something that then you would reach out to your professionals. You know, like Sullivan.
It's.
And say, you know.
Hit, according to Chris, the, the average cost of a rewrite would be a hundred forty thousand dollars versus thirty for a reexamination.
Get my vote, right?
What's the, what drives that, sorry?
Professional services, I would, I would think, you know, the amount of time that we have to spend rewriting the whole thing. You know.
I'm just curious, because it's, a lot of it is like, I'm like, because I haven't, like, I'm just looking at it here on my screen, it's, you know. Some of it's copy and paste and then, you know, you got this stuff from twenty sixteen, I'm just. Is it, it, so something I, I pick up, if you go in like the very first couple pages, it has like the breakdown of all the different lands, like how much is public, how much is private, how much is wreck, all that. Like, that's very inconsistent across a lot of our documentation, so from the EC perspective, if I look at our documentation, it doesn't necessarily line up with that.
I, I'm just trying to.
No, no, I'm just finished, so all I was gonna say is it would be great to use this because we're, we're looking at our environmental resources inventory. Which is basically a, a plan for all of our open spaces. And so we see a lot of opportunity to align.
With the master plan.
Yeah, or just be consistent, so if someone were to wanna read both of these documents, and I don't know that anyone does, but if they were, they would, it wouldn't be contradictory or confusing.
Well, we did, and we did adopt the last, I think we did adopt the last land use inventory into our master plan, so that was. To allow for better alignment.
Um. But it doesn't, it doesn't take away from, like, it's written here one way and written here.
No, it should be the same.
Um, so I guess, I, I, I apologize, I missed a couple of months, so I may have missed that part of the conversation, but I just, I, I was curious what the main. I, I remember we had a professional in like August or September, he talked a lot about what the differences were. Um. It didn't sound like it was, it sounded more like semantics than it did anything else, but you're actually, Chris is putting into a real dollar.
That may be a question to ask, you know, like Sullivan. What, what drives the cost for one, what drives the cost for the other?
Uh, I didn't look at this yet, but that's a lot prettier than looking at this, uh, scanned in, uh.
You know, I looked at the Princeton one, I looked at, and, and this is kinda like their. Their ideas and then like the comments below, what do they think they do, but like the Princeton one is. Pretty and the Asbury Park one's pretty and there's pictures in downtown, they talk about their curbing and.
But, but two, but two or one that we've reviewed, as my recollection is, to everyone, they, they were all reexaminated, they were not rewired.
Right. I'm just saying, what happens if we get into a reexamination and it costs the same amount, like, did we actually rewrite it or did we? You know, I'm just thinking.
I think you put.
Do we, do we, are we, are we actually choosing between two different paths? Or are we, are we choosing the amount of time we're gonna personally spend on this?
Probably, probably a little bit of each.
That was what was unclear to me, it's like, you know, are we choosing A and B or actually just we're choosing, you know, how much effort we're into it?
What is considered a rewrite, just, I'm kinda like picking back around. Semantic wise, you know, we take the change of border and the title on the first page.
You could, you could say we reexamined our master plan, everything is hunky dory, we don't need to change anything except for. Listing of an acknowledgement that these statutes now say. Our master plan in the later, it should have the electric, should have this, should have stormwater, we recognize that and we will work towards it. Thank you so much, have a good night. Thank you, yeah, as opposed to saying, you know what? The R seventy zone does not work. You know, we need, we need, you know, or if you really sat down, then maybe this is what drives the cost. If you really took a look at your land use as opposed to your zoning, okay. You know, how many, and we occasionally, you see it in a very good presentation from the zoning court of adjustment. Where an individual comes in and says, okay, we're in the R fifty, but we're barred, ordered by the R ten and the R seventies up the street. I don't know why we're the R fifty because we don't need anything, we should never have been done that, to really then take a look. At what's being done and saying, does the zoning still serve you? Um. And, 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 and you, you know your municipality better than I do, I know in certain towns, you know. You have as small as R thirty-six and as large as, as R one fifty, which is, you know, basically the size. Um, doesn't still serve you and, and you'll do a, get into the reeds and say. This zone doesn't serve you anymore, so we should eliminate this zone. Or if you had an overlay, not too long ago in a reexamination, I suppose for the exam, you had an overlay with a design towards encouraging certain growth. Never took off, nobody ever used the overlay, okay, well, ten years later, get rid of it.
Yeah, so I mean, those are two different examples, I, I actually think what this format, I thought was really helpful, just to kinda. Do a bit of a deep dive in utilities, facilities, we spent our time in the next couple of months doing that, like, knock off two a time. Maybe it becomes obvious that there's, you know, facilities that maybe is not a deep dive, it's not a heavy lift, we kinda name. Things we wrote down, I know I took a bunch of notes, like, I kinda know, you know, here are the things that are coming up in the next ten years. It's like kind of well known, maybe we move on, we don't spend a lot of hours on that section, but we get to another section, maybe. Open space and recreation, maybe land use, one of those, we find out in the conversation, oh, there's a lot. There's a lot going on there and we have to spend more time there, I, I don't know that that answers the question, is it a rewrite versus a reexam? We might just spend more time in certain areas than, than others.
To dovetail off about, I, I do notice because of your affordable housing numbers. And you're going to have to also have. You know, i- if you need to revamp your housing element. And your affordable housing plan. That needs to be done a year earlier than you completed the exam, right? You know, our time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm thinking that your housing element probably is not even done here in advance, and when you get to your reexam. Took care of that in June of twenty-five, you don't need to do anything in June of twenty-six, so that one's probably gonna be off your table.
So, yes, uh, so that, that is, I did wanna transition to the affordable housing in, in a second, um, but I do, I think it is valid. Are, are we decided that this is a reexaminer or a rewrite, um, the way that I thought Fred and I had been talking about this. Maybe it was only clear in my mind and not others, but this is gonna be a reexam, um, and not a rewrite. But when you see it online, you know, it, it does look like you could use a cleanup, I would love it. It'll look like that, and I know the final result, but if, in this environment, I don't want it to cost an extra hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I, I, I agree on the cost, way too high, but at the same time, like you're saying. You know, it's, it's like we're going through the process and you're not gonna know it's a. Technically reexaminer rewrite till you get to the end, right? I mean, you're going through like facilities and saying, hey, here's what they have in the last. They can be banging, they complete all those, there are any additions we have to add, or you have to add that borrow hall or library, one thing gets added, like I said, that's easy, that's easy, easy thing to do. Some of these other areas might be a bigger lift.
That's how we need a planner.
You know, and, and I guess, I guess we'll know that if the process is us coming up with what we think we completed, what we think is open. Sending out a survey, what do the people want, then we'll come to, is this a big lift? Like a rewrite or is it, everything's, everything's fine or it is good, and you know, there's not much.
Right now, you've got your answer to the equation, this is what we see needs to be done. And then get your survey.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Fred has responded to it.
All right, I did wanna ask, uh, we broached the subject of affordable housing, um, and Betsy, you did mention, uh, Chris York. So I guess this is, this question is for both Rich and Betsy. Um. With. Regards to the council needing a resolution by January thirty-first. Where, what is the latest, um, from the planners, attorneys, the administrator on affordable housing, is there anything that we need to do in this room?
Now, what they're going to do, either at the, uh, reorganization meeting or the meeting, I think it's on the twenty-seventh of January. They're going to accept the ninety-two units that we've been additionally tasked with, but then we're going to turn around and. Um. Request relief.
Okay.
So, we, we've done that before and we were successful, we got our, um, realistic develop, RDP down to four. From four hundred seventy-two, so. Based on the fact that we don't really have a lot of open space available. We should be.
Yeah, you've got one of the lowest percentages in the county.
Yeah, so we, we, we're hoping to be successful with that, but if we, if we, we don't. Agree to it from, you know, at this point, uh, the, the cost of litigation is crazy and there's no guarantee you'll be successful.
Is there, there's like, um, we're like twenty-five municipalities right now?
Twenty-six.
Still over the.
Yeah.
It's round four or whatever we're calling it, right? And then, um.
So that's what I said, you, you accept and still negotiate.
Right.
If you reject, you have to file your court case by February. I don't know if that, that piece was, was understood by the board.
Okay.
And again, that's really out of, that's really out of the planning boards here, it's really municipal, but if you accept by January thirty-first. You still can negotiate as to how your, wh- what your final final number is, or if you're completely rejecting it either by the. The methodology, et cetera, et cetera, you have to file your action.
Yeah, and our attorney, Mike Edwards. Is very much in favor of accepting it and then negotiating.
What?
Yeah, and you, you can reconcile the grievances that you have, and you have, then that extends that out to April first.
The, uh, wasn't there supposed to be a planning, wasn't there supposed to be a committee for housing? Maybe they. Met goes over all this stuff and, I just remember us being deeply involved last year.
Yes.
For last time we did the planning board to talk, but this time we're like. The planning board has done, we haven't done anything.
Yeah, I, I don't even know if there's been anything that we can do. At this point. But, yeah, Todd sent out an email today, did you get it? Okay, he sent something out today, wanted to know if it was still on the committee. Okay, I think so, the committee hasn't met, so.
Look, I, I think we'll, we'll take counsel with guidance on what planning board needs to do for this.
Okay.
For this, uh, we should, should be invited. Well, I was gonna suggest January was gonna be reorg, reorg meeting, right, so in February, once we get past January thirty-first. Uh, council resolution and then whatever, you know, whatever the next steps are, we're accepting it too, with them requesting a sleep relief. Can we request, who is Mike Edwards or Mike Sullivan to be here at the planning board meeting in February?
Yeah, sure. And I mean, if they both get making, last time we had someone phone in.
Yeah.
I think it was Mike Ed, Mike Ed.
We had Mike Sullivan come. Asked about.
Yeah. No, it, it was mine.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, every meeting we have, you know.
Four months closer.
Four months closer, and I know that the first deliverable is really the January thirty-first, but you know, now that we have the numbers. And a plan, I mean, I think we should be, the committee should be meeting, if, you know, planning board needs to be doing something, we're here to help and.
That committee, I think is gonna be reappointed on January sixth, the.
And if, and if someone came upon, we, we lasted, it wasn't part of that, was there greater capacity in the areas that you were looking at? This is, this is, we're, we're maxed out here.
No, we were kind of maxed out, we just, we, we earmarked some areas that we thought would be available for development, like, you know, that, that church area off Fairfield. Did they have a toll, created overlays, we did the business district overlay, so like. But, but we had meeting after meeting after meeting to come up with that, I just feel like this time around, just kinda like, hey, we're gonna say yes and we're gonna do this and we're not having any of those meetings. Amazing meetings come after that.
But.
I have a sense you were inventing everything for the first time there.
First time, the first time, yes.
But we also identified areas where we could realistically. Provide fair share housing, and that was Sunoco, and then the borough gave up the.
The Habsburg, you're married, you needed the, the piece there for the houses, yeah.
And, and, and all that took a lot of time, how much time do we spend with Eminem just? Designing the building?
Yeah, yeah.
That takes before we can come to an agreement.
Right.
Any thoughts on that? Yeah, no?
Yeah.
Um, actually, on that subject, if we have to come up with four additional units. Can that go into Eminem or is that all done and dusted and we have?
Four units already spoken for.
I know, but like, if we have additional, the four more that we're talking.
Well, we don't know if it's four more, it could be, could be twelve, it could be one, it means whatever.
Your outside number's ninety-two, depending on where you go through your grievance process to, to narrow that down. That's why I'm asking as to the existing facilities and the overlays, did you think that there is greater capacity, again. It's almost like the difference between the rewrite and the reexamine. Can you just, can you just say, okay, these are adequate and we still can see this, but if not.
Like, here we got, we solved over there, we solved this, we solved that.
Finding locations to, to achieve those goals in the next ten years.
That is all I have. Does anybody else have any questions on the planning board, anybody in the public have anything they wanna? I'm just checking agenda.
Someone online.
I, I think.
Is there somebody online? No hand up?
I think continuing in the direction we just did. Different categories worked pretty well.
Yeah, that's, that, that was kinda the, as of last meeting, we, when we assigned, um, kind of. When we assigned different elements to different. The cast was to come to this meeting with some sort of, um, preparation.
I missed a bit here or so, too, but. Some of the other means we kept just talking about the mesh plan.
Yeah. No, no, now. Last, last.
Can I, can I join you or help you with the conservation or creation of open space?
Um, you can, I'm doing it with Dave Bordelon, but you're welcome. Um, you can, I'm doing it with Dave Bordalong, but you're welcome to to join us.
Um, if you, I I would say that land use has Andrew, circulation is Neil.
Yeah, I could also pitch in with, um, land use.
I would say, I would say, instead of conservation, I know, I know you have one foot in that, but, um. We might need a resource on one of those other two.
We've actually accomplished a lot in terms of open space and access to the river. Now with our micro projects on Grange and Baton Road. And then we're just gonna be pointing on Fairheaven Road. That's significant.
I think the next step, and what do you see, if any, to improve that in the next ten years?
Yeah, yeah, the community center fields is probably the next. Playground there.
That's phase two, right, is that these two? The community center playground.
I don't think it's, yeah, there's nothing.
Nothing's been developed yet.
All right, anybody object if I make a motion to adjourn? All right, all favor, all opposed?